It's 7:00 AM.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is the July 17th, 2025 Town Council meeting. Get a roll call.
Brian Robertson.
Here.
Gary Chuck.
Present.
Lindsay Washma.
Here.
Roger Faust.
President.
Chad Blake.
Here.
All right, this time I'd like to amend the agenda to move number four, new business. A, the MS Consultants, the head of the line. We have a council member that needs to leave by 7:15. This is a voting item and they would like to vote on it. You need to move the minutes, put the minutes in there. And we also need to... Have between eight, between eight minutes. Yeah. And number eight, quick treasure report, we need to put in the July 19th minutes and the July 25 special meeting minutes.
June.
June. Okay. Yeah. Uh...
Can I get a motion?
I will make the motion.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Dan, yeah, ready?
All right, let's talk loud. Um, okay, good evening. So, last month, we talked about making a decision on the gas utility sale. Uh, just as a recap, um, we got two responses. One was from Citizens Energy Group, one was from Ohio Valley Gas. Uh, just as a recap, the last, um, email I sent everyone last month, both, both offers are $4,307,000. They both match the average of the appraisers. Uh, Ohio Valley Gas will keep the same rates as currently Lapel Gas Utility has. Citizens will use their Westfield rate tariff, and that's about 22% less. Uh, there is a rate increase scheduled sometime, we don't know when, in the next few months. Uh, however, the rate increase will be typically lower than what current Lapel rates are. Uh, I will add that Ohio Valley Gas has, has said they'll hold rates, current rates, for five years. So, as part of the, um, schedule I gave last month, uh, we're gonna make a decision, Town Council today. Uh, we start looking at, uh, asset purchase agreements here in a couple weeks, and then the first read will be, uh, in, uh, September, September 18th, 14th. So, our representatives from Ohio Valley Gas and Citizens Energy Group, in case anyone has any questions, but that's it.
Do you want the council to ask questions? I would entertain a motion. You might want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Citizens Energy Group. What else do you have to say on this one?
Citizens Energy Group.
Citizens, Citizens Energy Group, offer.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Before I vote, I just want to say, I enjoyed meeting with both groups, and I hate to disappoint either one of you, but I will vote for the Citizens Energy Group.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, now I'm back on schedule of the agenda. Public comments and concerns, anything that's not on the agenda? Yes, please.
If you can walk that far. And I, I just broke your stare, right? All right.
Don't worry. No, they're green. Yeah.
Um, Alicia West, I just have a couple questions regarding the redevelopment committee. Some more questions after I emailed you. Is the open position appointed by the Town Council, is it, just, we email it and...
I'll have to look to see if that's a president pick or if that is a council pick. Um, if it is something you're interested in, I will, I'll find that out and I'll go get you. If it's a president pick, then I can do that, or it's council, I'll wait on that.
And then... Let's try the other day. Oh, this talks, okay. Um, can you guys be more specific about what's expected of a member on that committee? I know you stated in the email that, you know, they meet right before the Town Council, but as an active member on the board, what's expected of a member, um, you know, are, are we required to research? Are we, like, give a little bit more about what the position entails, if you could, someone, please?
Take that one, Chad.
Yeah, I got that one. Uh, so, the redevelopment commission is ultimately the manager of the TIP funds, actually, rental fund financing. Uh, so, everything that we do is kind of derived by the rules for a redevelopment commission for that. Um, so, part of our redevelopment commission that you might find is different than most, we currently possess no debt as a redevelopment commission, which changes the rules of what we have to do. Uh, most of that is because we don't have a sufficient amount of funds to take on a large project that would typically be done by redevelopment. So, we have, uh, as a group, we will pick one or two small projects a year, uh, to assist in the funding of, that enhance the town of Lapel or make it better. Uh, so like this year, we assisted with the acquiring of the new town hall. Uh, that was a project that we committed to. Last year, we committed to assisting with the, uh, school resource officer, uh, funding. So, uh, right now, it's not the most exciting board in the world, uh, to be a part of, but, you know, we, we are building up a pool of funds, uh, to help with, you know, ultimately, we need some development to come into town, uh, that will, A, kick additional funds in, that will then kind of get the ball rolling on greater development and assisting things. So, you know, there's, uh, redevelopment commissions do everything from facade grants on a main street through, you know, uh, main street organizations, or, uh, assist with the running of utilities or roads or parks or greenways. There, there's so many different things that we can use that money for. Uh, it's just the, once we take on debt, it completely changes how our board operates and what we have to do. Uh, so before we would take on debt, uh, we, we want to make sure that we have enough to actually get a project really going. So, it's, uh, uh, you know, that's, that's really what it is. So, we, we have to complete required reporting to the state, we have some bills that we have to pay, and then, you know, just working through those projects that we support throughout the calendar year.
So, would you say it's a fair assessment for someone that is interested in joining that committee to familiarize themselves with the TIP, rules of regulations, O-C-R-A, rules of regulations?
Yep.
Okay.
It, 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 it helps. It, uh, the, the fun thing is, if, if you're interested in that and do that research, you will go, wow, they can do a lot. Oh, it takes money to do a lot, so, but it at least helps you know and be aware of situations and what you can do with it, so.
Then my second question would be, as we all know, I touched base on the House bill that was passed earlier in the year about, and then I brought up the question of what are we going to do to protect the wellhead? I just wonder, wanted to touch base, see where we were at, moving towards that to protect the wellhead and non-contiguous, you know, as far as that goes, coming in to other municipalities coming in that are not, non-contiguous. Wanted to just touch base to see where we were as far as making motion to protect the wellhead and see where we are with that walk.
I have not familiarized myself with that.
You're okay.
We have a wellhead protection program.
I thought we did have.
Right.
Yeah, it's a certain, it's supposed to be like, you know, like a, or the meets like this, but like we have certain members that are on like a wellhead protection program now, as far as like when the last time they got together or who got together, I don't know.
Right.
But we do have one place through, I think it's through the EPA or through IDA.
What she might be also talking about is we have the, uh, the water territory issue that's trying to come in, so that, that is something that we're working on with the, in partnership with township.
Okay. I just wondered, like, if you could give, like, a little bit more update as to what that may look like at this point?
We, right now, we are in discussions with the township, Sunny Creek Township.
Okay.
For a couple of reasons. One is to try to, the water. The other is the fire department.
Right.
So, we're in the beginning stages of that.
Okay.
So, that is a priority, and we're trying to work through it. There's a lot to work through.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we have to get the township to agree, we have to agree, then we have to make it public and have public hearings and all that.
Okay.
And then if everybody does agree, then it has to go to a public vote.
Right. I appreciate the update, but I was just curious, sort of touched base back and just wanted to update my notes. I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Real quick, before anything else happens, to anybody that's watching our YouTube stream, apologize, the camera is stuck in a position where it's pointing down at this end of the table, and it's not looking at the rest of the council. So, I, I apologize that you can hear people but not see this. Yeah, it's three of us, square on.
Okay, now to presentations. We have the Paxterum Brewing, Brewing Beer Fest, Way Out Beer Fest. This is, anyone from Paxterum? No, no.
It looks to be the same.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. This has been going on for the fourth, the fifth year? Fifth year, I understand. I can't remember. Yes, Brandon?
I make a recommendation on that.
Good.
So, the past couple of years that they've done this, the streets are pretty nasty afterwards.
Hmm.
Is there a way that we can get, like, them to, like, you know, get a street sweeper or something in after they're done with this? Because they're very sticky and nasty and it...
Is it trash or is it...
I know, it's nasty.
Where they spill the color?
That's what it is, yeah.
Beer, they spill beer? Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with adding... See, the street, they need street cleanup, street cleanup.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, I would, uh...
Any comments from the council?
I would entertain a motion to approve the event permit with the addition of street cleanup.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
New business, new business, new business. The adoption recommendation from the planning commission.
Hi, everyone, I'm Marcellus. Um, I've met a few of you, um, but I haven't had the full Town Council yet, so I'm the planning and zoning administrator at the town of Lapel. And last week, uh, the plan commission voted to, uh, provide a favorable recommendation for the adoption of a new fee, um, for a, uh, form that was adopted last month as well. Um, this form would be for people seeking to have a public right of way vacated, um, so that would include an alley or a street, um, or section of an alley or street. Um, as I presented to the plan commission last month, um, there, Madison County and Lebanon, um, both assess fees for these kind of applications, and in general, uh, wherever a fee can be assessed for such an application, I think it's in the town's best interest to do so, um, helps cover the costs of, um, my review of these applications or whoever ends up reviewing the applications. Um, and the fee that the town, that the planning commission, uh, recommended the town adopt is more $200 for an application.
Have we, uh... Come to any terms on this application as far as what they have to go through to...
Yes, so the application, um, packet, and I apologize for not attaching it to the, um, certification, but the application packet requires that, um, the petitioner provide the addresses and, um, get the signatures of all the property owners who's, are, who are adjacent to that right of way that they want to have vacated. Um, it is a, a, then a case that would come before Town Council in a public hearing, um, so people would then get the chance to, excuse me, people then get the chance to, um, provide comments on whether they think that vacating that right of way would impact access to any of their properties, um, or make it difficult to get around the city. Um, and then ultimately, it would be up to Town Council to then decide whether or not to approve the petition.
And this is, is this for a temporary vacation or...
No, so this would be, this would be like a, a permanent vacation, yes. And just so we're, just so, uh, there's nobody who has asked to do this yet. This is not something that anyone is looking to do immediately, um, but it is a procedure that the state, um, requires that a town, like, have a process for, and so just want to make sure that that process is in place and that before someone is asking about it, we have a fee for that process as well.
Yes, but they would have to make sure that there are no utilities?
Right. Or... Yes.
Power lines or any of that in that... Power lines or any of that in that.